Good evening, everyone. Tonight is the 15th of March. Beware the Ides of March. It's 6:01 PM and I would like to call to order the City Council and Planning Commission joint meeting. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. We're quickly on to number three and what I'd like to do this time is to introduce to anyone who hasn't already met Judy, our newest Planning Commission member, Judy Hontage. She moved to Columbus two years, one year ago?
Eight months ago.
Eight months ago. She's from Forest Lake. She was a businessperson. She was on many committees, the Park Board, the EDA, the Planning Commission, blah, blah, blah. And she's choosing to stay involved in her new city, which she has told me she really loves Columbus so far. So anyway, welcome Judy. Thank you for everything you're going to do. So, and we'll all get to know her more for the next several years, at least twice a month, probably more. So, the next thing, would someone like to make a motion to approve our agenda for tonight?
This is Janet. I'm moved to approve the agenda.
This is Lynn, now second.
It's moved and seconded. Is there any questions about the agenda or comments anyone would like to make?
I have one comment. The agenda that was on the website had the minutes that we were supposed to approve as tonight's minutes, not the first. So, the agenda said 1:15 or 3:15. I couldn't figure, and I tried, I sent an email to Con or saying what minutes, but I didn't get a response back. So, I've not read any minutes because the minutes that were on our agenda were wrong.
Okay.
I believe that was a typo on my part. I apologize.
No, that's okay. I just, I'm just saying that I think this is not, I mean, I haven't read them, so I don't want to participate now. I'm sure nobody else did either because they didn't know which ones they were supposed to.
I think I read minutes that were sent, but I didn't notice they had a wrong.
But the ones that were sent weren't.
Were not for this.
No. They weren't either of these. I mean, the ones that were in our packet, I should say.
Well, it was for, from the first, from the last joint meeting.
Right. The ones that were in our packet were for EDA meeting and another meeting that was in January.
So, what you'd like to do is approve the agenda with the exception of?
And remove item number four. Table it to the next meeting.
And is there a second for that?
I'll second. Lynn.
Okay. Moved and seconded. So, let's call for a vote and I'll start with Frank because you're on the end down there.
So, what are we, I don't understand what we're doing.
He's going to approve the agenda, but we're not going to approve the March 1st meetings.
We're not, we're removing item number five from the agenda.
So, we'll approve what we're going to do tonight, but we're not going to approve the minutes from last March 1st because everybody hasn't read them and there seems to be errors.
Okay. I've also got these. I, I can go along with that.
All right. And Sue.
Sue, aye.
Rob, aye.
Janet, aye.
Bethany, aye.
Lynn, aye.
Judy, aye.
And Jesse, aye. So, all that means is we've got a few more weeks to read all those and see what, what we think. So, that's not a biggie. On to number six, public open forum. Is there anyone, there's no one in the chambers, anyone online who would like to speak at public open forum? Hearing none, we'll move on to number seven. We're halfway through. This is great. All right. Now, here's where it gets sticky. Planning Commission Chairperson and Vice Chairperson, page one. And it goes through nominations for the Chairperson, the planning, or the Vice Chairperson, a recommendation of the Planning Commission Chairperson, and a motion to appoint the Planning Commission Vice Chairperson.
So, Mr. Mayor, you have to toss the meeting over to Ron.
Well, toss the meeting over to Ron. Here we go.
Do you need a?
Do I have to redistance?
It's a, the nominations for our Planning Commission come from the Planning Commission group. And so, you will, you will call for nominations for the Chairperson and then you'll, you'll vote just as a Planning Commission. The council has to ratify your recommendation. So, we thought we would just do it all tonight. So, that's why, that's why it's separated where your, the Planning Commission is going to take nominations and then you will make that recommendation and then the council will then either, you know, accept it, the recommendation and approve it. So, the council, according to chapter three, and that was in your agenda packet, while the Planning Commission makes the recommendation, the council has to approve it. So, each of the, it's a joint meeting, so we thought we would do both things in the same meeting, but just both groups have to do separate motions.
Okay. And then, if I don't vote on this, do I?
As, for Planning Commission, you are still, it's still the first quarter, so you are still acting as the Chairperson for this March 15th meeting. So, you do get a vote. If it was April, you still would get a vote, but it would be as a, oh, I take it back. You wouldn't get a vote, you should be a liaison.
Okay. All right. All right. So, everybody on the Planning Commission, you've heard what was stated. So, first of all, we need somebody to nominate somebody. And Barb's raised her hand right away.
Yes. I think Lynn Carver-Quinn has a lot of experience and I think she'd be a real asset to the Planning Commission, so I'd like to nominate her.
Okay. Now, do I ask again or do I ask for the second? Anybody want to second it or do I say anybody else? Want to nominate? Anybody else? That's a great job. You get weekends off.
Sometimes.
No other nominations? Anybody like to second it?
I'll second it.
We got two to second it or one second it? Beth, Bethany. Now, do we take a vote on it? Okay.
I think she would have let you know.
After, after, I think after your vote, I think, and Bill can chime in, after they vote, is, can she accept or not accept the nomination?
She should indicate before the vote whether she accepts the nomination and they can vote on, there's two actions. The nomination is separate from the vote making the appointment.
Okay. Sounds good. So, do you accept it?
I'll accept it. Thank you.
Well, great. All right. We'll take a vote. We'll start with Frank and move around this way.
I agree. Frank, aye.
Barb?
Aye.
And I think I shouldn't be voting because you get to vote. Because I don't, no. Okay. Okay. Aye.
Or I agree.
Bethany, aye.
And Ron, aye. So, now we got a nomination and we'll hand it over to the City Council.
And now, now it's the mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, we've had a nomination and we've had a vote by the Planning Commission for Lynn Carver-Quinn to become the new Chairperson of the Planning Commission.
So, this is Janet. I would move to approve the Planning Commission's recommendation to appoint Lynn Carver-Quinn as the Planning Commission Chairperson.
And this is Sue. I'll second.
So, it's moved and seconded. Any other questions or discussion from anyone? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote.
Sue, aye.
Janet, Janet, aye.
Rob, aye.
And Jesse, aye.
Well, well, well.
So, Mr. Mayor.
Congratulations.
Yes. Mr. Mayor, now you'll toss it back to, to the Planning Commission Chairman because now we need an appointment for the Vice Chairman of the Planning Commission.
Okay. This is the Vice Chairman. That's the second. Who was this Vice Chairman when I just finished? Was that Chris?
Pam.
Well, Pam was for a while, but then I think, was it Chris after that? Or Bob? I can't remember.
It was who? Oh, you know, maybe it was Bob Behrens.
Well, either way, we're gonna have.
I think it might have been him.
So, anybody like to make a nomination for the Vice Chair?
I would nominate Barb Bobic.
Barb, do you accept that? I guess that's what we ask now. Any other nominations? Hearing none, anybody want to second? Lynn's? Do we have to second it or just go to a vote?
It's a separate, it's a separate motion to approve the nomination, to approve the appointment.
So, I will make the motion to approve the appointment of Barb Bobic as Vice Chair.
Okay. Now, we need somebody to second it?
I will second.
Okay. Bethany secondes it and we'll take a vote. Frank?
Frank, aye.
Barb?
Aye.
Judy, aye.
Lynn, aye.
Bethany, aye.
And Ron, aye from last time.
So, now you'll toss it back to the mayor.
And, so we have a nomination and a second for the Vice Chair, Barb Bobic, for the Vice Chair of the Planning Commission. Is there a, so I'll make the motion to approve that. Is there a second?
This is Sue. I'll second.
So, it's moved and seconded. Is there any discussion or questions? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote.
Sue, aye.
Ron, aye.
Janet, aye.
Rob, aye.
And Jesse, aye. So, we have a new Chairman, Chairperson, and we have a new Vice Chairperson. What are you gonna do with all your spare time, Ron?
Well, I will help you out though tonight. What are you?
Four, four hearings.
Four public hearings?
Mm-hmm.
Bring your sleeping bag.
So, it'll take two of you anyway, just because there's so many. That's why they never said that before. So, there.
Thank you, you guys. Congratulations.
So, this is kind of a big day. We have a new Chairperson, a new Vice Chairperson, a new member, and a full, a full Planning Commission.
Yay.
So, thank you all. Really.
And we still got Dean.
Yep. The Dean's there. So, we're moving in the right direction. All right. So, that takes care of number seven. That takes care of number eight. And we're on to number nine. Oh, Dean, this is you. The City Council and Planning Commission Discussion of Ordinance 2301, Commercial Design Standards, pages two through 30 of our packet.
So, I'm sure you've all studied the information without having a clue what we were going to talk about or how we might approach this, but it became very apparent to me that with four new Planning Commissioners, since this topic was even discussed early last November, I believe, I don't even think Frank had started at that last discussion. It would be appropriate to take a step back and those of you who have tolerated me in the past know, I like to take kind of a bird's eye view of things in the very beginning and, and try to simplify it. So, if you look at, I think it's page two, is just an outline of things that I want to talk about regarding the design standards and there is a copy of one of the ordinance zoning districts, which is repetitive throughout all of the freeway corridors. So, we just copied one of those and this information came from that first meeting in November. And then, I just want to walk through all of this in detail later, but again, begin by saying, sometimes design is, is simple as, what's the curb appeal? What is it you like? And sometimes, if you can't specify what you like, it might be what you dislike. And we'll come back to that. Materials. We got an expert in the room, Rob, here, who deals in this business. There have been so many new products in the marketplace that those of us that grew up in the old days when cedar was the only thing you wanted to have because it was the best, nobody's building cedar decks anymore. They, they break down, they require maintenance, and so you have all of these composite material, everything. What is it called? I wrote it down somewhere because I never, oh, by the yard. Become one of the biggest sellers nationally now, another little local homegrown entity that takes recycled materials and you leave these chairs out at your cabin all year round. And they're indestructible. Ultra Deck, one of many, many names of decking that have replaced cedar and other wood products that require maintenance. And so, one of the things we may not be as familiar with regarding what appeals to us from a design standpoint are what are, what are these materials that relate to the outside of buildings? And I think there's, in some regards, an impression that you might have that this is no good. When I was growing up, a new material for the outside of a building was aluminum siding and everybody thought that was great. And then, they came up with vinyl siding and both of those original products were so cheap, they cracked, they dented, nobody liked them. They're all made today and they're totally different materials that are being used in a lot of different applications. They're just better than they were. I'm going to talk about EPHES. It doesn't show up on my schedule here, but I think there's a misconception about what it is. It's a fake material. It's something that is cheaper. It's, it's efficient. And please understand, I don't, I don't have any personal or financial interest in any of these products. So, I'm not, I'm not selling any of them, but I have changed in my own impression of things from being the one that wanted cedar lap siding, cedar decking, cedar everything to where I wouldn't dream of it. It's LP, it's Hardy, it's, it's EPHES, it's a lot of these products. And so, I've given you some samples and we'll walk through those very quickly. Colors, there's a lot of information here about colors. And I think it started out simple enough that maybe the community prefers earth tone colors and there's been some modification or some suggestions about it. And I don't know if we even want to be in the color business personally. And we'll talk about that. And that's a policy decision. It's not for me, but you just might simplify it by saying, is, is that necessary? And there, there may be good reason why this was a focus just a couple of years ago, but as we try to improve on it, and if you look at my color wheels that are included in there, I mean, earth tone is earth tone. I got like five samples of them and they don't look very different. If you tried to memorize one and then said, well, which of the five is this, you wouldn't remember because they do all look the same. And then, we added the term terracotta to our ordinance. I'm not sure where that came from. And I'm an outsider too. I was not involved in these most recent discussions last fall, which is why I can be a critic and not get offended by whatever. I'll probably offend some of you if these were some of your suggestions and that's all fair. We just want to talk about how to simplify design standards that work for your community. And ultimately, it's your decision. Another thing I understand that came up in previous discussions were, how about some tables that might help us? Some sort of index that, because we're interested in tax dollars and things of that magnitude in the community, isn't there a way that we could select these materials on the basis of their value? And I don't want to go down that path because value is derived in many different ways, but it's not from a table that anybody can give you. And I think Elizabeth, in talking to your own building official, talking to your assessor, these people don't have a formula, if you will, that says, well, yeah, you ought to use Hardy board or you ought to use real brick, not faux brick or whatever. They don't have such a thing. The Uniform Building Code does have a cost table, but it comes nowhere near what real cost is. It's just so if somebody comes in, applies for a building permit and says, I'm building this house for $1.98, they pull out their table and they make you pay a permit fee based on $180,000 or whatever the table tells you. But the real thing that drives value in your community is your own market. And a good example I like to give, whether it's Adina or maybe White Bear Lake, somebody may be able to buy the material and construct a building worth $400,000, but it will be valued at $800,000 in Adina or White Bear, but it'll be valued $400,000 here. And so, your own market is what is determining these values. We don't have a magic formula. And so, I don't want to, I don't want to dilute your zoning ordinance, trying to come up with a formula that says, well, let's pick brick because it's got the highest value. It may not. And as I started out talking about cedar, which is a beautiful product and still one of my favorites, it's, it may not be the best for what you're doing. And now, other products do cost more money. Another composite material, another local Minnesota company, taking quartzite, smashing it up, putting resins in it and making quartz countertops, they now are more expensive. Cambria is more expensive than marble, than granite, slate, other products that were at the high end. And so, this is a constant moving target and I, I just, I'm trying to give it to you in my own words and, and keep it in a perspective that maybe you just pull all of that out for a minute and come back to this notion of, what is it that appeals to me? Before we start looking at some of the pictures they gave you, we have constantly, yeah, not that often, the question has come up many times about workmanship. And I know when we started talking about design standards three years ago, several of the planning commissioners would point to a particular project in Blaine or Lionel Lakes and, and it was poor workmanship. And it, it related to, well, we don't want that product. And I won't name what the product was, but it was just bad workmanship. It had nothing to do with the warranty of the material. It was somebody that wasn't trained in, in putting that particular product up. And so, as I talked and our attorney is with us here listening, we can't control that. That is out of our control. That can be a state function, but it's not a local function. And so, we will continue to look at provisions in the ordinance that stress good maintenance, repair and upkeep, whether it's a sign or a fence or a building. And we have to, we have to rely on that and hope that somebody who's got a bad contractor goes after the contractor and gets them to fix the product. It's not a zoning regulatory function. And since that's come up, I, I just wanted to mention that. And then, there's a couple of other details when we look at the actual ordinance itself that have some bearing on things. I know when we got your first drive-through coffee shop, it was kind of misunderstood that maybe that wasn't our intention, that it's okay to have a drive-through, but we'd rather have a sit-down. And that's a policy discussion. And so, one thing that I will suggest, your, your market might not include a sit-down coffee shop. And so, do you want to exclude other drive-throughs that compete with the one you have or what? And so, when we get to that element in the ordinance, you think about that. Because it's very easy to change the wording to say, sit-down restaurant and coffee shop including drive-through service. Right now, it just says restaurant and coffee shop. And so, when our only coffee shop came in, it didn't have sit-down, it was approved. It was an allowable use. If you don't want that, we'll change it. But I, I just want to make sure that you don't want to exclude something just because you really want to have a sit-down, you may not have one. I've, I've been very blunt ever since I've been in this community. You're not going to get a, you're not going to get a grocery store for the foreseeable future, no matter what you put in your ordinance, isn't going to help you get one. It's based on rooftops. You don't have them. You, you like your rural community and you're just not going to get that kind of business. We started out, 2008? Was that our first retail study with Jim McCombe? I think so.
Oh, my gosh. I think it was.
And in 2008 or the mid 2000s, we, we had a study done that showed us some 350, 400 acres of land that we actually itemized in our zoning ordinance as retail oriented. That's now like less than 80 acres. As the markets changed and you know all of the things that are happening, Amazon and what have you, that have changed functions, all of those businesses that we grew up with in our own little community and you want desperately in your own, are all market driven. And right now, you have a lot of trees in your market and few rooftops. And so, a lot of things aren't going to happen. And you can be very strict in your ordinance and, and prohibit a drive-through restaurant because you only allow a sit-down. And I just want to make sure that's what you want to accomplish. So, we'll talk about all of those. And that's just my real quick outline. Let's look, let's look at the handout, but skip the ordinance itself and go to the pictures. And that is, what, page six?
Dean, before we go on. May I interrupt? First of all, for all of you new people, he always talks this fast. So, don't be afraid to ask questions when we have them. And Dean, we're, we're talking about the freeway corridor, correct? On both sides?
Yes.
And that's what we're looking for, the design standards. What do we want to see? What don't we want to see? Et cetera, et cetera. So, when you have questions, make sure to interrupt because, you know, Dean's been doing this for 30 years and it just boils out of him. But for all of us, you guys especially, the new people, and for us who have heard it, it's all, ask anything you want so that we really understand when we're done, what we're looking for, what we're asking for, and what we're trying to accomplish, which is to make that freeway district as beautiful as possible, but also not to make it so that it eliminates, if you ask for glass bricks for the whole thing, nobody can afford to do that. We have to come to a balance in the middle so that we encourage people to come, but we don't end up with pole barns. I think that's your first example. So, sorry for interruption.
No, no. That's perfect. I'm hearing challenged. This room is hearing challenged. If you say something and I start giving an answer that doesn't remotely connect to what you asked, stop me and say, that isn't what I asked. Because I'll, I'll go on and I'll go quickly and I'll, I'll forget it. The mayor made an excellent point. We're only talking about the freeway corridor, but that's several zoning districts. We're not talking about our commercial industrial district on Lake Drive. This is just the freeway corridor. So, we're not trying to eliminate some of these products in the freeway corridor. With that, rip steel.
Just to be clear, that's on both sides of the freeway corridor?
Both sides. Yes. It's, it's not one or the other. We have the same zoning districts on, on both sides of the freeway. They're commercial oriented, they're general business oriented and they're light industry and they're on both sides. So, yes, it's, it's everything.
Thank you.
And like any community where you have some existing uses, you got to work around those. We're not, we're not changing those and you're going to make exceptions if somebody in a building that I'll simply say is not on your list as a favorite, comes in and they want to change the type of the business. Most communities will jump at that and say, well, here's our, here's our new standards. You're going to, your community is unique to yourselves, you're going to have to work that out with your own business community. So, it's not so simple that things change overnight. You're going to grow with them. And you have some older businesses and many of you may be connected with or, or know those that have operated those and they've been stewards of the city for a long time. But they may not fit the pattern of vision that you have for the future. You're going to have to work with that carefully. It just doesn't change overnight. And it's the same with uses. You have a preponderance or plethora of trailers in this community on the highway like billboards and that is a, that is a visual thing that bothers some and doesn't bother others. This ordinance is not allowing new billboards or trailers, RVs, whatever we want to call them, in part because for the majority of people that have been in your positions in the past 20 years have just not seen it necessary to keep pushing this in the future. So, our. this in the future. So our, our standards for billboards have been shrinking. There will be fewer of them over time when their permits run out. The industry itself has removed some of those because that industry has also changed, and it's not what it used to be. We have a party in here now that's been interested in a new RV-type business. We had someone across the street connected with Camping World wanting to build a, a repair facility for these, which actually is allowed in the ordinance. And so one of the things when it comes down to the design standards rather than the uses, is the very first picture and a couple of pages that I have on here. I think the number one thing that, when people say, well, can't we use a table to determine the value and get us the best taxes? I come back and I say, are you referring to a building that looks like this? And this may not be offensive to many of you, but it is, if there was such an index, about the cheapest product out there. So from that standpoint only, this does perhaps resemble what some of you may have in terms of your own idea about what is the curb appeal. It may not be this. And so where I'm trying to go, and you can flip through a couple of others, they get nicer. This is more of a residential building that's stand, standing seam, ribbed steel, corrugated. There are a number of terms that fall into this. And there are half a dozen builders that specialize in these. Lester, Martin, come on, Rob, help me out. There's.
What's that now?
What, what are the other builders like Lester and Martin that put these up?
Oh, Martin.
They're all over. They're, they're.
Right. Prefab.
It's, it's not a, it's not an industry that's local to Minnesota. This, this is national. I mean, these are everywhere. And for the majority of people who want to make an investment, they're going to look at this because it's, it's very affordable. If you're trying to make a statement in your community, if this doesn't meet the curb appeal, then rather than dancing around the image and saying what you do want, we'll come back to that, you can sit and say, this is what we don't want. You can make it excluded. And then it might not be so hard to agree on what else you want. This last one, a multi-story building, it, it's, it's got a, a little different design element to it. Metal buildings can be very attractive. I'm, I'm not an opponent. But when it comes down to what I keep hearing people coming back to, well, shouldn't we put a standard in here that forces them to spend more money? Well, one of them would be not allowing something that's less money. And that tends to be the thing. We'll come back to this. Because again, you're the ones that have to make that determination. So I want to be clear, I'm not talking or picking on metal, per se. I already indicated that in the old days when I grew up, that, that old aluminum siding is far better than it used to be. But there are also metal panels used today in every type of construction, and these are just a handful of those. As you thumb through these, they can be any size panel, four by eight, four by nine, five by nine. They can be two by two, two by four, anything. And they can have a different appearance. They can be a burnished look. They can have this bronze style. They can almost look like glass. And, and so this may not be an effort to say, we don't like metal. You just don't like the particular style of the ribbed steel. It's that simple in my mind. These panels do cost more money. They're not, they're not enormously more expensive, but you don't buy 36-foot-long by three-foot panels that you put up on a, on a pole building. It's a different type of construction. And it's that way when you start talking about brick materials. If you're putting up a brick or stone on a building, or even thin stone, thin brick, you're hiring a mason, and that adds to the cost. That's a function of it. If you are buying a pre-manufactured or cultured stone, which can come in panels, they get, they get heavy when you're not dealing with an individual brick or, or piece of stone. But they make small ones that are thin-set, but they also make what's called faux stone. And those have no stone in them whatsoever. It's styrofoam with an outer coating that looks like a brick or rock or anything else. And those are installed by carpenters. You don't need a brick mason to do that. And so there is a function between value and what's going to ultimately end up in taxes, but we can't rely on it. Because during COVID, the building or the city and county assessors pushed all those valuations down. It lowered the tax incomes or revenues that you received. And so they are a function of a variety of things other than an easy table for me to hand you and say, well, let's pick this list of items because they get you the most taxes. It isn't going to work. So let's just keep going in these examples, and we can talk about anything. Ephes. Yes, go ahead.
Wait a minute. I'm, I'm lost on your, your example here.
Okay. That's the last metal. There's Ephes.
There's Ephes. Okay.
So if, if you're totally unfamiliar with this, this is not a new product. I'm guessing it's 30 years in the market?
Yeah.
Something like that. It started out where it really was an alternative coating material on the outside of a building. It might have even been applied to like a plywood surface of a building. If, if you got a magnifying glass, I can't even read it at this scale. But we're talking about the combination of vapor barriers, insulation, and, and then there is a outer skin which varies from, from one side of the room to the other. You couldn't tell if that was real stucco or if it was an Ephes product. And a lot of metal panels have that same appearance. And so when you think about these things, you, you need to talk to somebody like Rob who's experienced in this business. These are not cheap like they used to be, because they're all in one type of coating material that's doing everything, insulating, vapor barrier, and the exterior appearance of a building. And they can hang on a wood-framed building. They're pretty extraordinary. And then keep, I changed your pages. You can see this crane. I like this picture, because, you know, you might think, gee, that's a, a concrete panel that they're assembling up on here. This, this is just an Ephes panel. So it's going on the outside of a metal-studded building, and it's fastened on there and includes everything. The curb appeal, but it's got vapor barriers, it's got the insulation. Some of these panels can even carry electric wiring and plumbing. But you got to design that from the very beginning. Go to the next one, River Park Apartments, Louisville.
So on, going back to that Long Beach one, though, saw a lot of buildings you see now, too. That's actually all concrete, precast segmented. And then ironworkers will do weld plates and weld it all together, and then weld it back to the poured-in-place structure. So that's, that's an option, too, on that.
Yeah.
Looks very similar.
Yeah.
A lot of hospitals are that way in high rises.
And one thing, if you ever wondered, if you don't have firm footings, you're not going to carry the load with concrete panels, especially in a multi-story building like this. But even on the pole buildings, you're, you're going to end up with a faux stone product if there's no, if there's no foundation to set the weight on. You can't put stone on the ground. It's got to be on the ledge. And so when you're building your own house, if you've done this yourself, you got a 12-inch block, and then all the rest of them are eight-inch. Well, that 12-inch is where the stone goes. There's enough room to put the street, screens. It's the, the grout that goes on, and then the actual setting by the stonemason of the cement and the product itself. You can get real brick and real stone that are thin-set. They're an inch, inch plus rather than two inches in depth, or three inches in depth, or some are four inches in depth. They're real. You don't need to carry weight so much. So if somebody's going to go up an entire wall, it's typically a thin-set. So this all becomes a function of what supports these products and why people have designed lighter, simpler products are to allow these multi-story buildings to have, this one in Louisville, that's got kind of nice curb appeal to me. You can't tell unless you're touching it, or you might not even be able to know touching it, what the material is. And this is another Ephes product, product. The next one, there's a whole community downtown mixed development, if I remember correctly. Yes. Oh, that was in Salt Lake. And then a church, for heaven's sakes, down in Atlanta, that's all Ephes, the entire surface. And so again, I'm not selling anything, but I want to take away the impression in your minds that something that may have been fabulous in the past is just outdated for any number of reasons. And so when you look at it, this, this church in, in Georgia certainly doesn't look like a metal building. It doesn't have the panels. This looks like a nice masonry. It, it, it isn't. It, it fools you. But the thing I think that distinguishes any of the other flat panels from the ribbed steel is just the nature of ribbed steel. It's great for roofing. I have it on my cabin, but I don't particularly care for it for siding on my house. It's just got a different appearance. And so if that becomes a mindset that you're hung up on, and we're trying to figure out formulas to use in the different zoning districts, and come up with a laundry list of the exact materials that work, I, I think that's complicated. I like where it started out in your ordinance, that in whatever is close to walk and don't walk at the interchange, which is your highest retail and, and high-density mixed-use district, you have the highest requirement for masonry products. And we get down to the light industry district, and I believe it goes down to 30%. And so if you're not looking at a building that's got 30%, or let's just say one-third of the wall, that has the only stone, brick, even cultured stone at the bottom, and they all look the same because they're wainscoted. If the top part was Ephes, or if it was a metal square panel and it wasn't ribbed steel, would it make a difference to you on how complicated this has to be? I think it's pretty simple. If, if you look at those other metal products, or any of the Ephes products, who cares? Let them put 30% masonry on the bottom, and the rest of it, let them pick what it is. So we'll come back to the details, so you have a little better idea, maybe the direction this was going. And this was just draft information, by the way, that came out. But it, in, in my mind, it, it simply got a little bit, it got a little bit complicated. The last thing I want to talk about are the colors. Yes.
I just wanted, so for any of you who have ever heard of a barnumium, this is it. This is, the picture that you have in there, this is a barnumium. This is a house.
Really?
So, so this is the late, this is the latest thing that everybody wants, barnumiums. We've gotten a number of calls, whether we allow this in Columbus. And right now, they can build them. I think we have one or two. But that's what this is. I just, people have asked about this. When you had a picture.
That popcorn guy, right? Over.
By Furman?
Yeah. By, yeah, sure.
Just one on Furman and one on Loyola.
Yeah. Loyola. Yeah.
But what's, what's, with, with this here, though, this is actually a post-framed, just like a barn would be. It's not stick-framed. They, they span those posts out, you know, 10, 12 feet, and then they lay two-by-fours flat on there, put house wrap over that and just slap the metal on. So you're not getting as good of an insulation value as a regular traditional house.
So what defines barnumium? Like, what makes it a barnumium? And what, two words, barn, obviously, and condominium? It's like a.
I don't know. That's a new one on me. Let Elizabeth run with this.
I, I actually, I don't, I don't know where the term came from, but I know people use it. You know what I mean? And, and this is what, this is what it looks like, or one of the things that it looks like. And, and Rob, it is very difficult to meet the heating requirement, or whatever that factor is that you have to do, but they have to meet it.
Right.
So whatever they need to do to insulate it so that it meets the, those factors for, for heat, they have to do. So regardless of whether it's good, has good insulation or not, they have to pay the extra money to get it there.
Yeah. Yep, definitely. I think lake dewatering down there, that's similar style build, right? It's not the condominium part, but they ended up spray-foaming it to get that R-value for the insulation.
And I, I think if you were to go to any of the metal manufacturer sites, they'll show you some really nice-looking ribbed steel buildings. The problem is, in, in our commercial corridor, you're, you're getting the basic Lester building look. And it's because it's cost-effective. And if you want to change that, it's not that you don't like metal, you just don't like the appearance of the ribbed steel. And I had a neighbor in, in Minnetaka, very expensive home that, and, and they had, they, they had cedar lap siding, and it was full of woodpecker holes. And he had a, he had a contractor that convinced him to go metal. And unfortunately, 12, 15 years ago, when they did this, you didn't have the metal panels to the extent that you have them today. And it's barn material, honestly. Like, three different colors. It is about, in my opinion, the ugliest thing I've ever seen. They have no woodpeckers. But you can go with Hardy product, you can go with LP, you can go with any of these square metal panels. I don't know about Ephes, if they have a particular, they probably have a metal coating that resists woodpeckers. But there are, there are a lot of issues. And again, it's, it's the curb appeal. And so what is it you want, or if it's easier, what don't you want?
So a question for you, Dean, through the chair here. Do we got to go through the chairs and just ask questions? I don't know. I sat at the Capitol too much today. Sorry. So with Ephes, is that, like on Ronnie Naces Hotel, was that Ephes, or was that exact stucco?
Ephes.
Yeah. And I think before, they just recently added all the metal panels to the front portion of, with that remodel, that was all Ephes, too. So a higher-end building, right, with Ephes on it?
Yeah. And I didn't get into any of the.
The hotel is wood-framed, though. The hotel is wood-framed, and it, and it's, and it's with Ephes.
Sure.
And the original, the original building, I want to, it might be some sort of stucco because they did that design thing. And back then, I don't know if they had, you know what I mean, the Ephes the way they did today. But with the new addition, it matched the hotel.
Okay. Yeah. Yeah, I think there was a lot of precast on the original Ronnie Naces.
Yeah.
Gotcha.
But Dean, I think, and everyone else present tonight, I think the long and short of it is, we don't want the freeway being filled with pole barns. Isn't that what you're saying? Just say, just say no. And they can put Ephes, they can put metal panels, they can put anything they want. We just don't want a row of pole barns on the most valuable property in our city and at the entrance of our city. That's what I might take away from it.
And I, I want to be careful because the, it's, it's not that if you get rid of ribbed steel, you're going to increase your tax value. I, it may be negligible. This is, we're talking design standards here. This is all we're talking about. And if you want it to appear to be something different, you, you are forcing them to choose a different material. And the alternatives that you have, it can be wood. We allow all of the other composite products, Ephes, and flat metal. It's just not ribbed steel. And so would it appear different to you, and I, I don't want to, I don't want to pick on Lake Drive here, but when you go down there, with few exceptions, you got a three-foot wainscot of some sort of stone or brick, and the rest of it's ribbed steel. I did notice the new place on the west side that had the shop building first, now they put their office up.
Like.
They've actually got lap siding metal, which looks nice. And then the other half of the building is the ribbed steel.
So that's, that's actually LP Smart Side.
Oh, that was Smart Side?
That's a wood product.
You can't tell from the street. And so if any kind of lap siding product, I don't think you should, I, I don't think you should say, we're not going to tolerate vinyl anymore, we're not going to have aluminum, it's got to be X. They all, the parents, the curb appeal is identical. I did not know that that was LP.
So interesting about that building, too, that masonry's not, you know, mortar, brick-and-mortar type masonry. That's a screwed-on product.
Yes.
It's just fastened on with screws, and it stacks. Throw two screws, stack it, another two screws. two screws. And then, the ledges even have a flange on them for that brick ledge. That's just fastened, and then they roll their vapor barrier right over top of that. So...
But Rob, they told me, they told me they had a very hard time with the windows, because they said, due to the height, though, and the weight, they were having a hard time, and they had to reinforce inside, which cost them extra to do.
Correct, yeah. I remember them saying that. I think what they ended up doing is framing in-between them columns, some wood beams, you know, on the front. But I don't think it was all that much more.
You know, I don't know what "much more" means, and I think that's different for everyone. Like, how much more? You know what I mean? Is it $10,000 more, or is it $50,000 more? And so, I think it depends on what your budget was and what you initially started out with. So... And I never know this, because I don't see the price of buildings. I just... We just have design standards.
Questions so far. Faster we go, the quicker it's over. No, I'm just kidding. So, earth tones. Again, I purposely found five or six different schedules, and if, again, you tried to memorize them, and then went back and said, "Which of these palettes did I pick?" They all say the point. And if it's earth tone you want to get, it gives you quite a color range. And yet, we came back and said, "Let's add dark blue, umber..." I'm having a hard time figuring why umber is different from earth tone, but I'm not picking on anybody. I'm just pointing that out. Mahogany. And there were no individual colors of mahogany. It was a texture. I don't think we're going to accomplish that. Terracotta, I don't know why that's different from earth tone. And then, burgundy. We're getting into some bright colors, along with the last page, forest green. I don't know where that came, but that's in your current draft ordinance, and I don't know that you wanted that much. And the question becomes, without offending anybody, do you want to get in the color business? Period.
No.
And I think Janet and I talked about this once before. You know, bright, like stark white when...
Yeah. I said, "No neon and no brilliant." That's my two criteria. If it's not in the brilliant range, which means that when the sun shines out it, it blinds you. And if it's not neon color, I'm pretty... I mean, I don't feel strongly about anything else. I mean, they're not going to build something that is garish. I mean, if you spend that kind of money to build a building, it's not going to be something that they're going to be ashamed of. And we have so much more space. In a lot of communities where the buildings are right next to each other, I think that there's much more incentive to try to coordinate color schemes. But we don't have that here. We have a lot of space, a lot of green between our buildings, just by virtue of the fact that we have so many wetlands. And so, I don't think it matters as much here. If you have a blue building here, and a terracotta building here, or a, you know, a white building here, as long as the white isn't blindingly white. So, I mean, if I were going to write the ordinance, it would be no neon and no brilliant, and everything else we'll consider.
How does everybody else feel?
Well, I was going to ask Janet. I mean, we just approved Blaine Brothers, and to me, that's as brilliant white as you can get. And then, the red is scarlet red. I mean...
Well, it's... Yeah. But I think, you know, if you go into a paint store and look at all the different colors of white there are, I mean, it ranges everything from light, you know, light gray to light pink, in my mind. You know, you get different hues in there, depending on what they're mixing in with the white, but they still call it white. And I think Blaine Brothers is white, that's for sure, but it's not... The red isn't a neon red. It's not a brilliant red. And the white isn't a brilliant white, like the first Bear Homes was. And even the Bear Homes white, I mean, now that's more gray, but I think that when they brought it in, they actually... It was like a shade of white.
So, the one they're building now isn't the same color as the one in Blaine? Did you go to the Blaine?
I don't know. I mean, what he told us was that he had actually asked for some, I think it was gray to be mixed into the white, to tone it down. So, I don't know if it's the same or not.
Because, I mean, there aren't any bright whites on any of these here. I think that would stand out. That's...
No, I don't think white is in the spectrum of earth tone.
No. But that's what I... If we do, and we did approve one, how do we not approve others?
I'll answer that with another example, and that's... I'm not sure the color spectrum also allowed, I don't know what color. I won't use the child term, soft blue. There's another term for blue, but for your coffee shop. And that was in a district that required all brick. And I got the architect to give us an example of all brick, and then we turned around and gave him a variance, and let him have, you know, 25% brick, wainscot. Didn't argue about that particular color. And if it comes down to it, both Blaine Brothers and Caribou said, "Well, these are our corporate colors." So, when you get maybe a regional support center for State Farm, they're like that shirt, they're bright red, or maybe his water bottle. Do you really want to get into that business? That's just a policy question. And I'm not trying to push you one way or another. But with the exceptions that you've gone to, it was our corporate colors at Blaine Brothers, and all of the examples they gave us were the same. And you're the judges of it, but do you want to be in that business? That's up to you. That's a policy decision.
I have a question. Is there... And again, I mean, it maybe is right here, but is there a difference just between, like, color of the siding and accent color? Because, like, for Caribou to have it, you know, the logo is turquoise or whatever, versus if the whole wall was bright turquoise, clearly, that's massive difference. So, is there... Is that in there, like, a differentiation between, like, the color of the building versus, like, a sign, or an accent on the sign, or something like that?
The closest we come is in large buildings, and I think it was on the heels of Bear Home coming into the community, that when you get over 150 or 200 feet, I have to look at the standard, then you got to come up with some breaks. You got to do something different. Because you can have a shoebox building where that single style may stand out, or you can have what Blaine Brothers did to make their case. They took an otherwise rectangle shoebox-type building, and they put three different heights of parapets on it, and they brought their office 40 feet forward, and it isn't going to look the same as Bear Home. And personally, I don't care for white and bright red either, but, you know, that's... We approved it, because they went further with some architectural styles. And that's where I think you put your standards leaning towards, if you really want something that's outside of the box, you got to do something else to make it better. And if that's the direction you want to go, then I think we do continue to stress more features that make buildings jagged in their appearance. I was just reading something, because we're getting another proposal on the garage condominiums, the last building, and they talked about having the ugly side of the fence out, instead of facing in. And that was to create shadow lines with their two-by-fours. So, you think about that. You give the neighbors the smooth side, well, it is kind of boring. And if it's nice appearing, they were arguing that they would like that shadow line, and they thought that was an effect better for the neighbors than just a bare side. There's a lot to think about, and the more we try to regulate it, do we fall into the trap of constantly waiving the requirements? And then you essentially have no requirements.
Right.
Because everybody comes in and says, "Well, you let them do it, you let them do it, you let them do it." We do require now, virtually, anybody that wants variation in things, the design or the color scheme, they have to go through the planned unit development review procedure with a conditional use permit. And that procedure simply says, "We're not giving anything away. This is a trade-off. What are you doing to make this look better, because you want a white building?" And the last two meetings of the planning commission and the council with Blaine Brothers was the visual aspect with landscaping, not the building anymore. And that gives you a little leverage to say, you know, "You ought to put more landscaping here to cover up all those trucks that are going to be parked out there." Because the building's 46 feet tall at the highest parapet, you're not going to cover that up. It's going to be there. But the street level on Hornsby, what does it look like? So, they came in, and all of their splash, their curb appeal for their image, their corporate color scheme was on the freeway. They paid no attention to our local street. And that became, I think, the emphasis of the planning commission, and the council rightly so, to dress that up, because someday, Hornsby is going to continue to get busy. I mean, we've paved it. You're getting more buildings on it, and someday, it'll all be filled in, and it's nice to have that as part of your curb appeal. So, we do use that procedure now to let people argue why they want an all-baby blue, or whatever, or white with red trim. Well, then, what are you going to do for us? And it's a give and take. And we tell either the owners or their architects, day one, "You're not going to get away with this unless..." And as I say, we had an all-brick building for Caribou, and the regional sales director came to the meeting and said, "These are our corporate colors. You've just destroyed this building." The architect told me, he kind of liked putting all that brick on there. And I think he sold the planning commission, you were at that meeting, Ron and Barb, and decided to grant a variance. Now, that's a no-no in my mind. We can't give variances for those things. You got to make them go through planned unit development, because there was no difficulty or hardship with what they were doing. They just wanted it. So, make them come back and perform more for other things you want that would compensate or blend with this, like landscaping, through the PUD procedure. I just have to get that dig in, because I don't like variances.
I got to give a dig in. I thought we did a pretty good job on Blaine Brothers. Pushed back on them. I thought pretty good. They wanted to come in. We made them jump through some other hoops. Did they... I can't even remember. Was that a PUD?
Yes.
Yep. Yep. And they own more property there. It may be another one of the businesses they currently own, or they may buy another one, or they'll sell it to somebody else, and they're setting the stage for a nicer business as a result of what they're doing. And to me, that's the combination that you want to come out with. You're not trying to get rid of business in the community, but you're tired of certain uses, and our ordinance now is minimizing any RV and other businesses. And again, I don't mean this personally. It's just, you get overwhelmed. People complain that Forest Lake is nothing but car dealers in, you know, the prime intersections of their community. And that's what you do with zoning. You say, "Okay, no more car dealers." And they'll come to you, but our ordinance doesn't allow car dealerships either. I don't know if you knew that, but that's why you don't have them. They're not in there.
So, Dean, I think for the purpose of just some background, especially for the new folks, is, you know, when we came up with the earth tone idea, it was primarily being driven by the fact we just got a bridge that was that kind of adobe sort of look. And we had a developer that was interested in developing several parcels in that northeast quadrant, and I think the idea was that we wanted it all to look coordinated. Well, then it kind of, that kind of fell apart. The apartment that was going to be there kind of fell apart, and, you know, we still don't have our Hy-Vee and things like that. So, I think at the time, it wasn't a bad strategy. But when you don't have, you don't have a developer who's going to come in and develop, you know, a multi-unit or multi-building type development, I think it's much harder to be that specific with the colors, because you are going to run into the corporate color argument. You're going to run into other, you know, just preferences and things like that. And again, I go back to say, I don't know that it's as important anymore, because we don't have that kind of developer looking at our, looking at building. And we have a lot of space in between those buildings, so it just isn't as obvious when the colors aren't quite, you know, in the same, on the same portion of the color wheel. So, I agree with you. I think you're kind of shooting yourself in the foot by sticking with something so specific. And I personally like earth tones, so it's not that I don't like them. I just think, I think we're... It just gets to be too difficult.
And helping ourselves a little bit.
Yeah. And I think, for what purpose? That's, you know, that's really the question, for what purpose? And I don't think, I don't think you can defend it.
Mr. Mayor and Planning Commission Chair, if I could just weigh in on a couple of points. I think there's been some great points made, and there's a direction that you're heading in, or at least discussing, that I think is consistent. Commissioner Bobic asked, I believe, about, you know, how can we regulate, after allowing a version of white, how can we regulate this? The first point I would make is, there's a longstanding White Bear Lake case that says that the council and the community, the planning commission, can consider and regulate aesthetics. So, you have pretty broad authority to regulate aesthetics. Having said that, I like the direction that the discussion's going in, because, you know, if there's one thing that's in the eye of the beholder, is what color is more pleasing than others, right? And so, as I was looking at the materials that were prepared by Dean, I liked the color wheels showing the earth tones, and was going to suggest that if you're going to stick with earth tones, that you adopt one of those color palettes, so you can be specific that these are the allowed colors. But better yet, if you're going to create flexibility, so you can deal with corporate colors, you prescribe a certain type of color that, you know, the brilliant colors, or the things that are distracting, you know, those are the excluded, but everything else is then allowed. And then, you don't get into the idea of, "Well, we allowed blue, but not yellow." And so, at the same time, I'm telling you, you have broad legal authority to regulate aesthetics. It has to be a consistent system, which is why, if you wanted to stick with earth tones, I would suggest that you take one of these sheets and actually, you know, adopt it as your color wheel. You know, at least, if only to say this is guidance, because otherwise, you get into, "Well, you allowed this, but not that."
Thank you, Bill.
So, with the blue thing, are we kind of, you know, we got Eco Fun, that's blue, I believe, Bear Homes. You got a corporate color of Camper World there, that's a blue. They might be doing another project that's blue. I don't know that we maybe should exclude that. If they do that, you know, garage, they're going to want to match their colors.
Well, and I... If you look at the color wheels, several of them do have a number of blues, not all of them. And I disagree, or I don't disagree with Bill at all, saying if a particular one of these has the type of color spectrum, put that in as the example that you're making reference to. You know, our current language, prior to some additions or exclusions that were brought up last fall, say, "Colors shall be earth tones, such as shades of brown and soft neutral colors." Period. It doesn't come right out and say, "We don't want wild neon, whatever, whatever, whatever." But it's a pretty simple statement. It's not saying, "You will do yellow. We're a yellow town," or "We're a blue town now." You're just saying you don't want loud, and we'll come up with terminology if you're in agreement to that. And again, I didn't have a problem with the earth tones, and part of my reason for giving you, and if you go online, you can find these, you'll find hundreds of them, different companies that come up with these palettes, and they're published that way. I mean, you could reference that in the ordinance. We're using Costilla, CoTus, do ya? Co? I can't even say it. Anyway, I think you pretty much find a little bit of everything in these, but they were so close to me, it is, is that where your own particular tastes are, or do you not even want to have reference to the earth tones? Again, that's a policy decision. It's for you. But I wanted to try and simplify it and have you say, "What doesn't show up on here?" Well, the forest green. I don't know where that came from. Well, the forest green, I don't know where that came from with a potential addition. You've got some soft greens and you've got mostly soft blues. There's no bright blue, there's no bright green, and certainly no bright white that Janet's referenced. But they've got off-whites in, in many of these palettes. And so, the, the, the point tonight isn't necessarily for you to resolve any of this. I just wanted to come in and see if you were interested in simplifying it, and coming up with some direction that staff can put this into a different ordinance format than you have, and make it less complicated. And with that, let's just start on page four of the handout. And that is a copy of, if you go on the page prior, it's actually a snippet of the ordinance that was one of the several zoning districts in the freeway corridor. This is the community commercial. So this is right up at Walk and Don't Walk. This is our high-end district, if you will. It had the highest percentage of things.
Dean, before we go on, may I interrupt? I happened to go to the airport the other day, so I went 35E to West Seventh Street, where they built like thirty new apartment complexes.
Like right on the road.
And they are every color, I mean, some of them are this green, different greens, and they look lovely. There's a bunch that are gray and black, those, that's the new thing. Then there's white with black trim, that's the new modern farmhouse, if you get this Dwell magazine, that shows all the modern, newest things. So every, there's every combination of every color, and if they're done well, they look good. So I'm not, as I look at these earth tones, to me, those are so, they look like the eighties. I mean, I can just see platform shoes and earth tone everythings. And, and who knows what's going to be next? And then it was all these gray houses with black trim. I know this is commercial, but, and then I see these, there's one that's this green color, and it looks really, really nice. So maybe you're right, not try to narrow it down so much, just let it figure out a way to say it, so that it, it's not fluorescent green with pink flamingos out in front.
To, to me, your alternatives are where Bill was going, and that is, if you like bright green, have an example of it. But how many people are going to match that?
Yeah. Well, and especially because as the years go by, those, the hues change based on whatever the, you know, the newest and greatest and latest is. So you can pick something now, and three years from now, no one will be able to find paint that looks like that. Or materials that look like that. Because it's all dated.
My four-year-old granddaughter lectured me that that's fuchsia. I'm like, where do they get this stuff? You know? Who cares? So I think the spectrum is, you don't say anything. You don't, you don't require anything.
Well, so I'm curious about that, because I'm, I mean, I like the earth tones, but I really like any color that maybe is not bright. So like Janet mentioned, but I like white. I like the Blaine Brothers, and I think it's important to allow the companies, if they have, if that's our corporate color, that we don't say, no, you can't use it, because this is Columbus. They should be able to use their corporate colors, if it's white. But I thought that went really well with Blaine Brothers, the way we did that, and we had a give and take. But how would you actually put it in there, so there's not so many questions if you're not specific? Like, put the color wheel in there, or like you say, put the green, if you want green?
That's the risk. I mean, that, that becomes the problem. And then if we're going to make those exceptions routinely, then you may as well not have anything to start.
Right, right.
And so, if, if I'm hearing, I don't mind earth tones, maybe they don't move me, I, I don't mind white. If the approach is that the design standards are meant to allow people to be creative but not obnoxious, then that's, that's where you might tend to have these standards go.
Is that a good, is that a good direction? I mean, if that's what we wanted, and we just said, yeah, we, we don't want anything obnoxious. We want it to look nice, but...
Bill and I have been creative many times. We will sit down and figure out how to say, just, you know, don't do anything obnoxious. And maybe you don't even define what that is, because what is it? Different for each of you.
If you're picking, like, he just said, pick one of the charts and say, this is what we recommend, because we're not telling them. If you go to page twenty-three, you have your greens, you have your blues, then it's up to them to come up to, if they want bright green and they see, okay, maybe we can meet in the middle.
Well, I think one thing, if I might interject, I, what I was hearing in the discussion is, generally, there's a desire for flexibility. You don't want to exclude a company's corporate colors. The, the concerns are bright or brilliant. Brilliant color, I was looking up, Janet, that's a good term, because it's a defined term. And neon color is also a defined term. So we, we can come up with language that creates, you know, good flexibility and, and excludes, you know, those brighter, brilliant colors, distracting colors, and neon colors, just, you know, as a, as, as a, not, not just guidance, but just as a regulation. And then that leaves everything else kind of on the table.
You kind of already have it. Soft neutral colors. It's in the rule.
Yeah.
Soft neutral colors, that eliminates all the bright, obnoxious colors.
But I do think that people are very able, and this is kind of what Jesse was saying, it's so, like, people who are creative, who are really good at this, like my aunt's interior designer, the thing she can, like, tell you a color palette, and you're like, what? Come on. And then you see it, and you're like, oh, my gosh, that looks so good. Not that we necessarily want, you know, flamboyant colors everywhere, but I think that people who do it well, or know what they're doing, can incorporate colors that may not be soft or neutral in a way that is awesome, and would really, you know, complement the... So I think, if there's a way that you can word it, so that it basically says, don't be dumb, then, you know, because all these have to be approved anyway, right? So it's in there, it says, don't be dumb, and if the people who are approving this say that's dumb, you can't do that. There's, you know, right? I don't know.
You know, and...
Well, that's, that's a little subjective.
You're not actually going to say, don't be dumb, but if you word it in a way that gives you something to, to point to, when, obnoxious, or whatever the words you choose, or however you decide to word it, neons, or brilliant, or whatever, but gives you something to hold on to, but that leaves room for people who are really, really good at their job to design something that may not be soft or neutral, or something like that. I don't know.
Yeah, we, we saw a beautiful cabin renovation, where it was an off-white cabin, and the architect, it was the architect's cabin, had orange trim, and it looked great. You know, orange trim looked great on that cabin. It wasn't distracting at all. So I, I get what you're saying, you don't want to exclude something that would look terrific.
Well, you guys have got your marching orders on that one. Have fun.
Okay. That's, we're done, we're done with that one. Let's, without walking through the details of the ordinance, are, are we close to simply saying you're okay with metal and the whole pers, you know, the, the variety of different materials that may be out there available, with the exception of standing seam? Is that simple enough?
With the exception of what?
I think we should accept standing seam, but not ribbed metal.
Ribbed.
Yeah. Because if, just for...
Well, I, I think Bill and I are going to be conscious of what that accurate definition is.
Because like on page nine, that's a standing seam, and that's a, that's a hugely-used product, you know, in buildings.
Number nine.
On page nine, it says metal panels examples.
Oh, yeah.
So the angled roof, that's standing seam, and then that panel on the wall, that's like an ACM panel, which is a, it's actually a plastic that's sandwiched between two pieces of metal. So...
Yeah. I, you know, the, the two most familiar, you talk about standing seam roof, that is a straight category, that's what is on almost all...
Yeah, like Caribou, that's standing seam.
That's how they define that. Another product is corrugated, that tends to be an equal up and down variety, whereas the others are, are gaps, where you are nailing it to the stud dimensions, and, and it allows the water to shed correctly. But these are flat metal panels, like you just pointed out on nine. We have to get the right definitions from the industry. And if it comes down to having examples that what you do and don't want, we can go that direction as well. But I think that's a key. If the building that Elizabeth's got on the board now is not what you are wanting to see in the freeway district.
No.
But number nine, that Rob just cited, what's the matter with that? That's what, to me, that's what we say. We're not going to change unless you want to open this category. We're not going to change the, the debate about starting up at the interchange and working your way down to the industrial district, what percentages have to be masonry. I don't know if anybody wants to talk about it, that, that can be on the table as well. But those were in kind of graduated distances, if you will, from the interchange, and that's where the actual uses go, from your entertainment district, high housing, or only housing, for that matter, to where you're now getting down into mid-range, uh, commercial uses that are not necessarily retail, more service-oriented, or basic light industrial uses. If those percentages are okay, then, let's go ahead and look at this. Let's go right to the page. It is, uh, page four. At the top of the page, it was crossed out, and the substitution was the concept that a number of different communities use this, that's, that's fine. But to me, this is just overly complicated, and you're going to find something that falls through the cracks with this. So what it used to say, and what I would restore, is eighty percent of the facade on all exteriors of all buildings shall consist of masonry products such as brick, stone, stucco, decorative block, tile, cast stone, and precast concrete panels. Period. That's the category. That, that doesn't include EPAS, that doesn't include any metal panel. It's, that's an agri, or that is a, a masonry category that you're requiring closest to the interchange. Now, somebody comes in with a beautiful architectural building, that's got a combination of materials, but it isn't eighty percent, they go through the plan unit development process, you have the discretion to say, ooh, it's only fifty-three percent, but that's drop-dead gorgeous. That's how you want to do this. And so, I'm not suggesting you change the percentages that you've come up with, even though, if you want to, we'll, we'll do that too. But get rid of what's underlined here, and strike all that out. And so what this is saying in the, in the basic category, is that the rest of these uses will have the other materials, EPAS, metal panels, whatever, whatever. But in your, in your best district, you don't want a hundred percent metal building. Somebody will argue, go downtown Minneapolis or St. Paul now, those are all metal buildings, there, there's no masonry anymore. Well, we're not quite downtown, but that is true. There aren't any skyscrapers now that are built with stone. I mean, they're just not. They're, they're too heavy. They can support panels, like Rob's talking about, and they'll put all of your insulation, all the plumbing, all the wiring, everything, in each panel and connect them when they're installed. That's expensive. And I don't know that anybody can tell from a distance whether it's EPAS, or whether it's real stone, or whether it's metal that's treated. These metal products now, EPAS started it, they're, they're, just like your ceilings, they're, they're speckled to look like stucco. And from a distance, you can't tell them apart. And from an efficiency system, they're, they're actually very efficient. I mean, the EPAS products now, you, you can see the application, they're, they're quite extraordinary. But I would suggest that we keep the same percentages that you had before, and then just restore that the eighty percent has to be that way. We make a distinction, that we're saying, when you make that calculation, all windows, doors are excluded when they're coming up with their eighty percent. So if you look at the wall of a building, and you take the glass out, the remaining eighty percent is a masonry product, and the rest can be metal panels. And that's, that's a very common thing. You're not going to find somebody putting ribbed steel corrugated metal panels in category one, when it's eighty percent masonry. They're just not going to do it. But they will put other metal panels. The risk is when we get down to your light industry district, where I believe it's thirty percent has to be masonry, what's the seventy percent consist of? Rob?
Question for you, so you're saying, you want to pull these, unstrike this, so it's eighty percent, correct? Is what you're saying? And is that just, say, highway-facing or street-facing?
Yep. This, this, this says, at your primary district, the community commercial, commercial district, this is the standard that's in the ordinance today, that eighty percent of all walls are some masonry product.
Okay.
So then twenty percent could be EPAS, metal panel, it, it could be lap siding, you know, LP product, or...
I feel like you're almost, you know, tying their hands to a precast building then, for cost-effectively.
Well, they can go a hundred percent. So precast, precast is allowed, and they can go, they can go a hundred percent.
Yeah.
They just can't go under that. And I, I, Rob makes a good point. What, what determines the buildings like Bear Home are the span that they want to create. It's very difficult to get a product that has high ceilings or second level, without doing the FabCon-type of pre-manufactured concrete panels. Period. But they've been making those in a fashion, we say that we don't want flat, unadorned panels, we don't mind the raked appearance, whatever. Bear Home switched from a raked earth-tone color to white, bare, flat panels, and it became an, an issue. If you stick to these standards, and we just say, you know, in this district, again, it's eighty percent masonry, the rest can be other, but we add the exclusion. We're not allowing corrugated metal in any of these districts, in any of the percentages. Period. So you won't see that. You won't see the example of a Leicester building in the freeway corridor, ever.
So...
Now, I guarantee you, some architect will come in here, and it'll be a new type of ribbed steel that we haven't seen. Or in some instances, they'll do it horizontal instead of vertical. Let them argue through the plan unit development procedure that that's acceptable. It's just, you don't want the Leicester building. That's all we're getting rid of.
Sure.
Can't you put, can't you be, or, Rob, can't you put, you said that it was limiting to tip-up panels, but can't you just put masonry veneer on it, and just, and that would be masonry?
If you put, on what? I'm sorry.
Veneer.
Oh, a veneer.
Masonry veneer. I mean, if, if, if the group said veneer was masonry, you could easily get to eighty percent with another material.
Yeah. Yeah. You could pull that off. I, I just look at that eighty percent, I was talking to one of the biggest siding contractors in the Twin Cities today, and he said that typically all he sees in a building standard is a third of the building to be masonry. And Minneapolis only, and I know Jesse hates Minneapolis, so I hate to bring it up, but they only expect fifty percent masonry on a building. So, you know, you gonna go to a busy town, or are you going to come to Columbus?
It's policy.
Think about, you know, and I know we want people to want to come here, but...
Our, our first building proposal in the northeast quadrant of the new interchange, which at that time, when that proposal was approved, was a hundred percent masonry. Or, it said primarily.
Yep.
Okay. They ended up, it got approved, between metal and the masonry product, it was about forty per seven, seven percent masonry. And for whatever reason, uh, planning commission and the council liked it. I have to excuse myself, because I had retired at that point, and I, I wasn't involved in the review. But when I came back and looked at it, I, I asked the questions, how, how did this get approved? Well, if you're not going to stick to the standards, don't adopt them. That, that's my call. Because the more exceptions you make, the more difficult it is to the next person who's just whining that you let them in, I'm, I'm going to do the same. That, that's what happens. And so, if eighty percent isn't practical, you can, you... And so if 80% isn't practical, you can, you, you can do things like 80% of the street facing, or 100% of the street facing, or, you know, whatever. And then they come up with a combination and say, well, we'll do the whole building at 50% on all sides. Or they'll do 100% on the street facing and other on the other sides. And you think about a lot of the businesses other than in old downtown where everything faced each other, they all had an orientation you were concerned about. What do you get in the suburbs? They're all strip malls, and there's a back end of those. That's where the trash goes and all the deliveries go. And do you care if that's got any masonry? Or do you want it all up front? Whatever your percentage is, I like the wording that says all exteriors. Because we've got an industrial product, project pending, and they put 30% on all sides of their building. Nobody's going to see this because it's seven buildings in one little development. It's like, they should have come in and said, we'll, we'll put it all on the side facing, facing West Freeway. That they, they are gonna abut the caterpillar business. I mean, where do you want the design focus? There's nothing to the west other than a half a mile of wetland. And then you get the freeway turning to the south. In any event, there are a lot of options. And I, I, I think what was originally intended to be accomplished here with a declining scale started out at primarily brick. That, that was how that language was, and this is a remnant of that, 80%. Should it be 50? I, I'm not going to carry that argument, but anybody that wants to promote something lesser or better, that should be on the table. My focus was on the materials themselves, not the percentages.
Okay.
To get off dead center on percentages. But let's all think about what Rob just said. And if you keep it all at 80% or even go to 50%, but it's all sides of the building, then you have an opportunity where somebody's going to say, I'll put 100% on these three sides and nothing on the back. And they do that through their PUD review. So let's think about that.
Yeah, definitely.
But the number one...
Dean, this is, this is Bill, Mr. Chair. I, I just want to ask a quick question because I was making a few notes. It seems to me that the consensus, or at least the discussion, I don't know if it's consensus yet, is to allow the metal panels, but to eliminate ribbed metal, ribbed metal or standing seam. Is that a correct...
Yes.
...statement? Okay.
Allow flat metal panels, but not ribbed.
Yeah, corrugated.
Or corrugated.
Were we going to allow standing seam?
We, we have to, we have to come up with the, with the terms that make it clear that flat metal panels, no matter what size they are, are allowed, but not ribbed, corrugated, or what the proper term is. And standing seam is, is, is one that's used in the business, particularly roofing. They're separate, they're, they stick out, they've got ribs. But we'll, we'll have to come up with the terms.
So what, what, what was this orange one compared to this one?
Those are flat metal panels.
Those are like the shingle.
Flat, flat metal panels? And this was your, this was your standing?
That's ribbed.
Oh, that's ribbed?
Yep.
Okay.
And I, I tried to give you progressive designs that, you know, weren't all hopelessly ugly Leicester buildings. You can have metal buildings that have some features to them.
I was just...
And they can be attractive.
I'd say that, that page town right there, that, that looks like...
How do you really feel about Leicester buildings?
Are you a Leicester dealer?
No.
A Walker museum, looks just like that.
But they are nice buildings. Don't want them all.
And again, on, on my five acre home site, if I'm living in town, I, I probably would get a Leicester building if I wanted a 40 by 60 shop building. I mean, that's very affordable. I would. But we're not talking about your five acre parcel. We're talking about the biggest exposure area in this community. And, and big bucks spent with the racetrack and, and a half a dozen new buildings in town. And we want to keep that streak going, but not keep them out. And I think Rob's got very legitimate points to say, if they can, if, if that total percentage was down a little, but it stays on all sides, they could still come back to 80% on the front and lessen the back. And that's how we reviewed that only apartment project you have here. It, it was creating the focus, the emphasis on what was facing the freeway because the backside of that building faced the DNR property, and we don't care what the deer think. And so there were less features on the backside than the front. But that was done through the PUD review that massaged those features a little. We also modified their parking standards, also through the PUD procedure. So I think that's key. Bill, did we cut you off with the questions you had on where we were going in that standard?
Nope. Nope, you answered them. Thanks.
Okay.
Well, Dean, if you look on page 11, is, so I see the metal flat panels in the front, but is that corrugated or ribbed behind it? I'm just kind of trying to get my head wrapped around the definition.
Which, which one?
So it's the kind of, that one. So see...
No, that's a flat steel.
No, but look behind it.
Oh, that's...
Is that corrugated?
That's, that's, that is not corrugated, but it would be the ribbed or standing.
So we wouldn't let that happen?
Nope. You, you wouldn't let that happen. And I don't know if that's honestly the same building with two different styles. And again, you'll have architects or owners that are going to argue, this, that's the appearance I want. I'm a farmer, and, and this is a milk co-op, and my offices are going to have flat metal panel, and my cow barn is going to have standing seam. You, you're going to get it. But what you're not going to have, if you prohibit the ribbed product, is any of that in, in your community. And I don't think you're at risk for keeping out highly designed buildings that wished you had allowed them to have that combination. They could still come in and make that argument through the PUD process. I just want the panels above the front entry. I've got this clear panel glass entry, and I want to set it off with that ribbed steel. You might agree, and then you'd approve it under the planned unit development. That's the flexibility you have. But we're trying to keep out the majority of the buildings you don't like by saying no ribbed steel, because they all look the same. And they have that connotation of cheapness and discourage people to make investment. And what you're trying to do is progressively have property owners agree to make investment in their property. They build on what the last one was. And, and, and we put the blinders on because some of our existing buildings aren't in the greatest shape, and the uses aren't what you want, and, and they don't look nice. But you're not Roseville, and you can't come in and just totally redevelop it yet. That's not your market. Just like you can't get a grocery store.
So I do have a quick question. And thank you for that, because I, I agree that it, it's easier if it's less complicated. But we went through this whole process, so sorry Frank, not you Frank, but the other Frank, because he went and looked at all the other cities and what they were doing, and this is what a lot of them are doing. So I'm just, help me understand if a lot of other cities are doing that, where they're breaking it down in classifications? What, what's the difference? I mean, is it to our benefit or their benefit, or do you know?
Without knowing exactly which community example this might have been, I, I would say it is the high value communities that are doing 10, 20, 30 times as much commercial development from retail, service, commercial, light industry, and a lot of apartment buildings. And, and so this would be, in my mind, a Woodbury, an Egan, or...
Okay. Woodbury?
First one. I was going to say probably Bloomington. And again, if, if we were sitting with the elected and appointed officials from those communities, they would have very distinct opinions about why they have those standards and what they're insisting on. We have a different community here. Somebody said, oh my gosh, look, there's our, there's our design in the coffee mug. What is it? Rural. That's in, that's, that's in your logo. This isn't Woodbury. You're honestly lucky to have gotten a proposal for that apartment project. It was marginal from the standpoint of their own housing analysis that they could support what they were doing. And the features that were included in that building, I, I was dumbfounded. They're, they're going out on a risk. Well, they're still trying to get investors. And so it's, it's, you, you might not, you might not have it. How many amendments have you done to your purchase agreement? Five? So they're still around, and that's, that's the good news. And those people spent attention to detail, and they had nice features for their tenants in the building. But it's a far cry from the debate that goes around the table in the Woodburys, the Egans, the White Bear Lakes. They're different. They don't, they don't care anymore in their mind that people who are catering to these businesses live on five acre parcels. They're, they're a different frame of mind than we are.
Okay. Thank you.
Did that help?
That makes, yes.
And that's not good or bad. It's just different. And so I, I have a hard time sharing ordinance provisions other than those that if Bill and I were having a conversation and it was a way to do whatever, and you accomplished it, then you're going to go after somebody that had the best way to do that. That's the value of the language. But to look at what they may have in design standards, what their setback standards are, we're all different. They can't be copied without having something. And the history of the community is a big element in, in what your standards are. And so it's painful for some of us to even say, what's the matter with a Leicester building? I got one. Well, you, you frame that in what is it I want as the hallmark for my community? And I'm, I'm laughing a little bit about Janet's comment, no neon. If, if gambling is allowed here, you may get some gambling, or some neon sign requests up at the, up at the racetrack. And you go some places, and there's nothing wrong with neon. There's, there's a lot of old restaurants that had the old fashioned, tiny discreet neon, and it's kind of cool. Even when they flicker and blink like they're ready to burn out, there's something about it. It's that hideous, in-your-face appearance that you're talking about, the brilliance. And that's where Bill earns his money. He's going to, he's going to come up with the language on how to word that.
I, I have a question. How do you determine what, I guess I don't understand this, who has to have a PUD? If they don't meet these standards, then it's a PUD is required, is that correct?
Yes. And so we, we changed the ordinance to make it allowable for every commercial district and industrial district to use the plan unit development procedure. The, the basic premise of that procedure is to allow flexibility. You can do that legally without setting a precedent that you do when you grant a variance. And, and state rules are very specific about how to, how to allow variation from standards if there is a hardship or a difficulty. And we, we rarely meet those standards, and that's why I don't like variances. But under the plan unit development procedures, we've got the discretion. And if we didn't like the outcome of where Blaine Brothers was going, we would have said, you got to do better than that. You, you got to, you got to put a wall in addition to the landscaping to screen all those trucks. That's how it works. You negotiate.
And, and that, they're informed of that before they even go through the process?
First, the first time I met with Dean Dally at Blaine Brothers was, you're going to have a hard time selling white, especially with a red cap on it. You know, you're the furthest from whatever. And he said, well, how do we, how do we deal with that? You're going to submit a plan unit development, and you're going to incorporate design features in your building. You're going to create the orientation of that, so how it's viewed by the 80,000 travelers a day that go by, that's going to be your focal point, your highlight. And they did a nice job. I mean, they really did. It's very easy to allow your office to be inside the four walls of a blank building. It could, this could have looked just like Bear Home, except with red trim. And they really helped turn that around. And if they hadn't done it to the, to, to your satisfaction, you could just say, we're not, we're not caving in on our color schemes because you just haven't done enough. And there are people, well, this other pending project, I don't want to name one that isn't even here yet, but they pulled a little bit of a switcheroo from what they showed us in the original meeting a year ago on what their building was going to look like. And it's looking like what we're trying to avoid right now. And so we're, we're going to, we're going to hammer them to get rid of any kind of ribbed steel in these buildings, because they have to use the plan unit development process in order to have seven separate buildings constructed over a three, four year period of time without knowing who the tenant is in any of the buildings. And so we have to structure, like a master conditional use permit, if you will, and then come in with subsequent permitting that would match the lease of these people, and it has to be consistent with the ordinance. But because they have to go through the PUD, if we don't really like what these buildings look like, it's, we're, we're in pretty good shape to demand what we want. So I think I understand where we're going. We, we have an exclusion in item number one. Materials, I'm hearing that you're quite open to just about anything other than the ribbed steel. And for now, until we come back at another work session and talk about percentages within these individual districts, I, I think we're pretty good. All right? Colors, I think we're heading not even to having a color wheel attached. We're, we're just going to say, we're, you know, it, it might, it might resemble something like we, you know, we like a variety of colors, softer, more neutral, nothing, brilliant, neon, however that's worded. That's what it's going to say. And then I, I, I think that entire emphasis is done. Unless anybody had a question about my number four, the valuation, we don't, we don't have a magical index that tells us pick EPAS over this because you're going to get more taxes. So we're just going to let that one drop. And we've discussed before, and I will say again, we will look at the language in here for, for everything in the community that talks about maintenance and upkeep of the buildings. All of these projects are going to be done through the conditional use permit process. That'll be a standard in the, in the permit. And that was included in Blaine Brothers. The buildings, the fencing, the landscaping had to be kept in good repair, workmanship, whatever, whatever. And so we will keep that standard. The only thing we didn't talk about is the very last item. It, it was two different things. And we opened up about restaurant seating versus pure drive-through. We've, we picked on Caribou because you have one. Taco Bell is now building drive-through only. I don't know who else is, but there's one near my neighborhood. I haven't been to it yet. But you, you have to determine, do you really, is adopting a standard that says it's got to have seating going to bring you that? Or is the market going to bring you that use? And so my question is, do you want to prohibit a competitor for Caribou? Because they don't want indoor seating either, but now you could have somebody else drive through. Do you want to prohibit the non-sit-down food like Taco Bell? That's the trend. That's where it's going. That's a policy decision. Right now, the way it reads, you could have a restaurant or a coffee shop without seating and drive-through. So our, our, our traditional thinking about any restaurant is sit-down. I mean, there, there was no carryout when I was little. I mean, there just wasn't. You could go to the, the deli in town and get some carryout, but that was it. And so we have this notion that sit-down everything is the best. Minneapolis was prohibiting any drive-throughs. We're not Minneapolis. And so I think you are going to maintain drive-throughs. Do you want to go that route? And we don't have to decide this tonight, but that'll be another topic that comes up. And I think one of the other ways you might have tried to reach that was the last phrase on number six, minimum building size. was the last phrase on number six, minimum building size. And that's been added. That is at the bottom of page five in the sample ordinance that you had. And I don't have an opinion about requiring minimum building size. We do that in all housing districts. We may have a minimum unit size for a rental, an apartment. We certainly have minimum footing sizes for single-family structures. So to simply say that you don't want anything other than, what's the say, 3,000 square feet, that's a modest number. But that number would prevent another Caribou. And so if in combination, the 3,000-square-foot minimum was intended to prohibit another one of those, I don't know the size, honestly. I'll have to look it up.
So, but it was 3,000 per buildable acre? And so Caribou's on three-quarters of an acre? And I think it's 700 square feet?
Yeah, their building was six or 700.
Yeah, yeah. But I don't know if the whole three-quarters of an acre was buildable. But I mean, I think what we were trying to do there was to try to avoid a 40-acre parcel with a, you know, 2,000-square-foot office sitting on it and a bunch of piles of things.
I don't oppose that. It's just in connection with thinking about where you were going with the drive-throughs, does that eliminate all the drive-throughs? Because it would, since Caribou was six or 700 square feet. But they also are not going to buy the 40-acre parcel. They're going to be on postage-stamped lots. They're going to be landscaped. Their circulation system, that was the biggest thing that we looked at. And they do have outdoor seating when it's summertime. I don't know if anybody will be there, but keep those in perspective because that's what they do. And Elizabeth, bless her heart, since I've known her here, working in the community, has always driven to make sure we don't have the 5,000-square-foot building on a 40-acre buildable parcel because then you're grossly underutilizing the property and the taxes. As you grow, your land prices go up. When I first came here, we were talking $3 a square foot. Went up to six or seven. That's back down to where you are.
Yeah, about three.
Three? And so that's a function of the market. And not much was being sold. So you can go ahead and advertise it at six, seven bucks a foot. It didn't sell. And now that it's back down to where it is, that's good. And so you're going to be in that market where somebody, I'm not saying they're cheating the system, is willing to buy because they don't want to go through subdivision. They buy a 10-acre parcel, and they only need four. But it was there. It was a willing seller. It was a quick deal, and they put up a modest building. What happens in every community over time is not going to happen here for another 20, 30 years. But eventually, your land values will dictate that all of the metal buildings are going to go. All of those that are 50, 60 years old are probably going to go because they're struggling to meet code requirements for commercial uses. And all of those underutilized properties are going to come in through either the subdivision process or because their investment for a 5,000-foot, could even be a block building, is met after 20 years. And it's a teardown. And there's nothing wrong with not accomplishing your dream. It's just, it may not happen in our lifetime. It's your kids. The market is something we simply can't control. And we keep studying it. And we've reduced our amount of commercial or retail property based upon on that market. And now, again, this provision with a minimum building size, I have no problem with. It'll take care of itself eventually. But right now, you're just saying somebody can't come in here and buy 15 acres. Well, then what they're going to do is probably subdivide the property so they meet that buildable or that minimum size per buildable acre on the property that they've got. And that's okay. So keep those two in perspective of the other item, and that is sit-down versus all-drive-through. And what you honestly think. Because that's individual. That's just a policy decision. Questions?
Can you get any statistics on where the sit-down versus drive-through versus takeout? I mean, there's got to be something out there that says, you know, 40% of the restaurants that are, you know, being built or open now have reduced their seating to whatever percentage and are relying more heavily on takeout. I think that's what I keep hearing and seeing. Maybe not so much drive-through. I think the takeout, it depends on the restaurant. If it's fast food, it's drive-through. If it's not fast food, it's takeout. But it'd be interesting if there was any statistics that would help guide us on that because I think one of the things we can't do is come up with standards that we like, but we're blind to what the market's doing because then we're sitting out here with our hands empty because nobody will come because that's not what the market's demanding. So if we had some market data on that, that'd be helpful. I don't know if that exists.
I rather doubt it. And the markets would be so different that they may not be relevant, again, for the types of policy direction you want to take this. I can tell you, all of us have seen during COVID our favorite restaurants throughout the Twin Cities, but mainly in the inner city and the inner-ring suburbs, close. And only a couple of them have reopened. And so there's a major change that's taken place because of a major health issue, but also a big change in business. And when half of the offices, and that's a loose standard, are not requiring employees to come to work downtown, what impact does that have on those businesses? It's enormous.
But, you know, I kind of keep up with what's going on with the restaurant business, at least in the cities. And as many of them that closed, you're right, not very many came back. But man, there's been a lot of new ones, a lot of new ones that have reopened. And what they all seem to be is this hybrid of seated and takeout or pop-ups or whatever. I mean, you know, there's all these different kinds of iterations of them now. And some, you know, some of them are really high-end, and they're still doing a big business in their takeout. And they've built their, or they have a portion of their footprint that is a market, so you can buy their sauces or their whatever. Plus, they have some seating, plus they have takeout. So I think, I mean, and I have no problem with any of that, but I think that we have to be somewhat educated on what the trends are there before we draw a line in the sand and say they have to have only seating or we won't let drive-throughs. So I'm just, if there's any information like that out there, that would be helpful.
Yeah, I certainly would be interested. And we'll look if there are better statistics, but I think they're going to be very localized. The other issue is, the moment we think we have a handle on this, I mean, there's a glut in office properties. There's a glut in retail properties. The service businesses and industries, and Bill's firm does lectures on these statistics. I can't quote any of them, but it changes so rapidly. I think we're grossly overbuilding the apartment market now. And it follows years of criticism that the vacancy rates were so terribly low that we had to do it, and the banks permit it. And then all of a sudden, we have a glut with, you know, housing of that attached variety. Our permits are 50% down from two years ago in single-family housing construction. Is that going to change next year? I don't know. I stopped at the Holiday Gas Station to get one of the Parade of Homes magazines. And there are, other than $2 million homes, there aren't any except in Wisconsin, all the way out to Zimmerman, Big Lake. I mean, there's so little housing going on. The investment in that for single-family is way down. And so people that are gambling on the market are going out and buying really cheap property on the fringe. And we know people go there, even though we're in a high-gas-price market. But where I live in Minnetoka, Plymouth, certainly communities like Corcoran, Medina, there's all kinds of vacant land. You don't have to go to Zimmerman. But that's where that investment is going. And so, again, the minute we understand that, next year, it'll be, there's a glut of single-family homes, and we've got a shortage of apartments again. To your point about preferences, we're predominantly empty-nesters. The preference would be to go to a nice sit-down restaurant occasionally. I get that. My daughters, they're in their 40s with two little kids, and they only do entertainment now, that includes kids. And there's a whole trend, according to her, about restaurants that focus on parents that don't want to get sitters. They want their kids to come with them. There was none of that when my kids were there. We had to hire sitters to go out. And you spend a lot of money for that. And so it changes based upon the people who are experiencing it, the generation that those people are in, and the people with all the money that are making investments. And again, I just think, again, driving through the region, the apartment market is going to go way down. We're still not building affordable housing. That's the crisis. And so I think we're going to see a glut in apartments. And I think it's going to take a long time to eat up surpluses in office and retail space. And so getting retail in your community is going to be tough. And it might be one of the fringe uses, like a drive-through-only business. That's what you have, is a freeway. You've got approaching 100,000 vehicles a day. That's what supports that. That's where the money goes. And for the commuters that are using your interchange, that's what they want as well. And I think that Hy-Vee concept for, hey, call in in the morning, and you pick up your dinner on the way home, and it's actually homemade, it's not restaurant-type, that was a great concept. And that's still out there.
Way out there.
That's not rooftops. That's traffic. And so you're in a traffic market, not a rooftop market. So retail, grocery stores, things of that magnitude are still going to be tough. What didn't we talk about that you'd like to talk about? Been two hours. Let's knock it off. I think, I think we, yeah, I knew one. I think we have enough direction to come back and edit just one of these sections with some concepts and ideas. And we'll find out what those times are rather than trying to get in the nitty-gritty. And the things to think about for the next one would be sit-down versus drive-through, minimum building size. If you want to revisit percentages that you have on masonry-type materials, everything's open. Again, we've got a new planning commission. And so any other ideas you have. But I think the big items, we can go back and create a new draft for you to look at.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dean.
Thank you.
And we're not having a joint meeting, the next meeting, because we've got four public hearings. So are we tentatively talking about mid-April? Is that the next mark, meeting time?
The next meeting is at 6 o'clock with the four hearings.
When's the next joint meeting?
No.
Next joint meeting?
Are we talking the second meeting in April?
It might be the second meeting in April. It depends on applications. And I'm just not sure whether there's, where we are in the schedule. But that's the soonest it would be.
All right, then, let's move along to City Council Personnel Committee report. Janet or Sue, or both of you?
It's short and sweet. You guys just got it handed out, I think. One is just an update on where we are with our code compliance inspector position. So we had one person that came through the whole process of applying, interviewing. And that person's being scheduled for a follow-up interview next week. And then we'll make a decision whether we're going to push them forward for approval for hire. So stay tuned on that. We failed to accept the resignation of Ella. So that is an action we need to take tonight. And so I think you all know that Ella, our planning and zoning permit tech, submitted a resignation. Her last day was last Friday. And so I would make a motion on behalf of the Personnel Committee's recommendation that the City Council accept Ms. Giefer's resignation.
Second that. Rob?
So it's moved and seconded to accept Ella's resignation. Is there any questions or discussion? Hearing none, I'll call.
Sue, aye.
Ron, aye.
Janet, aye.
Rob, aye.
And Jessie, aye.
And then the last thing is, the city has a policy that employees can only carry forward less than 120 hours of vacation per fiscal year. And that's a good policy under most normal circumstances because you want people to take their vacation and get recharged and all those kinds of things. We had a number of things that happened this year that got in the way of Elizabeth being able to do that. So she's sitting on more than 120 hours that she needs to get our approval, making an exception to our policy to allow her to carry it forward into the 2023 fiscal year.
So is this, oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Well, I was just going to ask if the exception is just for Elizabeth one time? Or is this to make the exception for everybody going forward?
It's for Elizabeth one time.
One time, okay.
Everyone else is fine.
Yep.
I'm the only one.
She's the only one with a cot in the back room.
Everybody else was able to take their vacations because she didn't.
So did you make the motion, or shall I?
I will make the motion that we allow, approve Ms. Musco's request to carry forward hours in excess of 120 from fiscal year 2022 to 2023.
I'll second that motion. Any other questions or discussion? I'll call.
Sue, aye.
Ron, aye.
Janet, aye.
Rob, aye.
And Jessie, aye.
Okay. Can I do one more thing that's not a Personnel Committee?
Yep, go ahead.
Under the guise of a council member report. So I think a few weeks ago, I sort of gave you an update on where we were with the Sunrise River WMO party with trying to get our joint powers agreement updated and approved. And we have, for those of you who don't remember, we have one city, Ham Lake, who has historically been obstinate about granting approval. Our current JPA has language in it that requires a unanimous approval of a funding formula and certain other things. And we've gone through a long, long process, more than a year now with them, and just had a meeting that Bowser pulled together. And it really looked like they, you know, kind of opened their eyes to some things. But within about a half a week of that meeting, they had their council meeting, and they reverted back to their baseline stance. Not going to approve the funding formula, not going to approve the changes that were being made to the JPA, et cetera. So we've had some discussions on the board. And we have also, a number of people have engaged their city or county attorneys and just to get some advice. The one thing that I think is a game changer, not that I think, that I know is a game changer, is that during that meeting that Bowser had organized, the Bowser attorney pulled out a state statute that prohibits water management organizations to require anything more than a majority vote except in the examples of a capital improvement project. So although he didn't want to say this because he wasn't representing us, he basically said, he didn't basically said, he said, "The intent of this statute is clear," which we all interpret, and the county attorney interpreted, and many of the city attorneys have also interpreted, to say, "You can't have that language in your JPA because it's not legal." So with that, we decided we were moving forward with finishing the work that we had started. And now we need more money to engage the attorney that is the attorney of record for the WMO to finish that work. And essentially, what would happen is there's three cities that have agreed to all the terms, the funding formula and everything else, and one is going to say no. But if we have a But if we have a statute that says, well, we can't require anything more than a majority, we can move forward with the majority. But the attorney, the WMO attorney, has to finish the work, and we're out of money. So what I want to bring forward here is a request to the council for an additional $1,000. And each of the other cities are going to be asked to do the same thing, so that we can have enough money to pay the attorney to do the work. And, you know, it's hard to see how this will play out. I mean, it may be that Ham Lake will go, okay, fine, you know, it's not worth fighting this anymore. You know, we're just going to give in. Or they may mount a legal challenge to it. I have no idea. But without doing this, we are stuck. And we can't be stuck anymore. This is just crazy. So I would move that we authorize another $1,000 to be spent or provided to the Sunrise River Water WMO to finish the work that has been started on the JPA for attorney fees. That's my motion.
This is Sue. I'll second.
So it's moved and seconded. Are there any questions? Or discussions? How long have you been working on this, Jenna?
Well, we started the process about two and a half years ago. But, I mean, the arm wrestling match with Ham Lake has been about a year, a little over a year.
A little over a year.
Yeah. And they're just, they really feel strongly that they don't get value out of this. And so first, they wanted to withdraw, but then they learned that that wasn't going to happen. That really wasn't going to happen. And so now they're just back to planting their feet and saying, well, then, fine, we're not, we just refuse to agree to this. So.
And these dollars would come out of the Sunrise Fund?
Correct.
All right. I'll call for the vote.
Sue, aye.
Ron, aye.
Janet, aye.
Rob, aye.
And Jessie, aye.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Anyone else from the City Council have anything they want to add? How about planning commissioners? Ron, this is your last night.
My last night.
You've been replaced.
I've just voted out.
Yeah. Nothing?
Oh, I have nothing other than tell Lynn will help her out. And I'll be there at April 5th.
Okay.
To help, you know, I'll show you what I do. And I haven't been sued yet, so.
Frank, anything?
Nope.
Nope. Lynn, our Madam Chair. You ready for all this? All right. Judy, ready? Here we go. Barb?
I just wanted to thank Ron for the great job. You've been really an amazing asset to the city.
Didn't know what he was signing up for, when he agreed to that one, did he?
He's still saying no.
Yep, and he stayed. So that's good. Elizabeth, anything to add for any of us?
I don't have anything else to add.
No? Okay. Someone like to make the motion to adjourn?
Do you have?
Yep, go ahead.
Do you have something really quick? Just because I wanted to follow up on the billboard, the oval pan signs with the Columbus name on them and the ladders. So after looking at the conditions a little bit, just to really quickly, I'm not sure who all was here. So basically, a few weeks ago, there'd been mention that some of the billboard signs for Clear Channel with the Columbus sign, they weren't up to the standards, and the ladder was in front of the sign. After looking at the conditions and comparing to the bridge, the color of the sign, it does look to be a match. I did state that I wasn't, it didn't quite look to be right. But after kind of looking at it a little bit more, it's one of those things when you're driving down the highway quick and looking into the sun, sometimes it doesn't come right away. But that should be fine. However, the ladders were nowhere in the plans that were originally submitted. So as I stated, I was going to work with the company in trying to find a solution. And I did speak with the representative earlier. And one suggestion that I made, just based on some other billboards around, was if the ladder could be moved to one of the sides. Now, with the setup of their billboards, there's, I guess, a little bit of difficulty that might come with that. So some of the solutions that they suggested were painting the ladder to match the stone. There was also the suggestion of moving the sign onto the front of the catwalk. And he referenced Outfront's first sign on Interstate 35 has a similar setup, not with the Columbus sign, but with the Outfront name on it. And that one might be a possibility. It has to have a catwalk. I think most of their signs have catwalks. And he said he would have to talk to his engineer as well. Another option he threw out was the potentially putting the sign on the stone base below the ladder. So those were three options he had. I suggested the moving it to the side. I don't know about the logistics of that, but that might be another one. So I just wanted to update everyone on that, that I'm still working with them. But it's in the condition, there was no ladder in their site plan. So we'll just have to go forward from there. And I don't know if there's any questions or if everyone's answered to get out of here, so.
Frank, would you come back with a proposal to solve the ladder problem for the Planning Commission to approve? Or how does, I mean, how will you make a decision depending on, you know, what they suggest and what the staff feels appropriate? Does that come back to the Planning Commission then? Or it's a process?
I believe that it's just a matter of they have to be in compliance, and we'll just have to keep working with them.
But if they come up with a, let's say they say, okay, we'll paint the ladder, but we still don't want the ladder to be right there in front of our sign? I mean, I guess I'm just, I'm looking to Elizabeth, too. I don't know. I'm asking, because I don't know what the process is.
You know, with the billboards, I think they would have to come with a concept, and we would show you the concept, because this is a big, this would be a departure from what they showed you. Not a big departure, but it's an aesthetic departure that we purposely wanted the sign to be visible, and now it's covered. So, I mean, there was a direction. And I think, you know, when they come up with a plan, we'll show everyone what the plan is, just so, you know, just so you see it and understand what they're trying to do and in a vein of working together. Now, having said that, they'll be before you, they'll be before you on April 5th. So maybe we can have that discussion as a sidebar to their application.
Sounds like a good idea.
I got a question. They haven't done anything? The ones on 35W look like they've been altered. Yeah, 35E, 35W, I haven't been down.
Clear Channel or Outfront?
Clear Channel.
Oh. From when we?
Northbound. Well, I'll have to take a look again. But if you look at their signs now on the northbound on 35E, you can see Columbus. So I don't see the ladders behind it or something.
They're on the north side of the sign.
Yeah.
So you could see the ladder coming southbound, covering the sign.
On the east side.
Correct.
Right. But before, I could have swore the ladder was the same way on the other side. But either way, whatever. Sounds good you're moving on it, though. But 35W was the bad one.
Yeah. No, when I was coming up here today, I intentionally went up 35W. And yeah, like Rob said, there was, it's, you don't see it on, if you're going northbound, you only see it if you're looking in the rearview and the side mirrors, which I did. But then I had to look back on the road and be like, oh, yeah. But still less dangerous than the potholes on Lake Drive, so. And I think, unless there's anything else, I think that's all I have.
Thank you, Frank.
Thank you.
All right.
So I move to adjourn.
And a second.
I'll second. Wait, you second it?
Oh, you can.
Aye.
I'll second.
All right, I'll call for the vote.
Frank, aye.
Sue, aye.
Ron, aye.
Janet, aye.
Rob, aye.
Bethany, aye.
Lynn, aye.
Judy, aye.
And Jessie, aye. Our meeting's adjourned.